This is the regular session of the American Council of the City of Bisbee. Campaign for change in the state of Arizona on Tuesday night, 2019, at 7:00 PM with the City Hall Building, 915 South Tocqueville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, hold please.
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacaminho.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Alberti Chave, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Aldo Arduño, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our moment of silence, I'd like us to think about, first of all, with the numerous tragedies and problems that we have in the United States, I'd like us to take a minute to think of our brothers and sisters in Christchurch. In fact, we had 50 people slaughtered just last week, and I'd like us to think and reflect on their situation. Thank you. Would you please stand up. (Applause). I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As soon as the council's shut, we'll get this. Well, good. All right, first of all, I would like to welcome and acknowledge Peggy and Steve Hoffman. They're in our front row for those who don't know them. It's welcome back.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with both of you. We are looking at having a... We're looking at having a work session next Tuesday, and the single agenda item will be the council's discussion of a new city manager, a permanent city manager. And of course, the public is invited to that as well. That'll be at 5:30. And we have called to the public. I'm sorry, did I interrupt that line? Allison Williams.
I'm Allison Williams, program coordinator for the Copper Queen Library. Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, members of the community. I just wanted to mention a couple things for upcoming programs. Next week, we are having Monica Pugh, a volunteer at the Bisbee Animal Shelter, must-love animals. She's going to do a presentation on fostering and bringing some animals to foster, and this is a different route than permanent adoption, but it's a really great way to be introduced to the community here at the library, and we're really excited to work with other departments in the city to take advantage of our Tuesday night presentations. Also, April is Poetry Festival month at the Copper Queen Library, and we're having Logan Phillips come and do a workshop and a reading. We're having Richard Shelton come and do a workshop and a reading, and we're having Dawn Michelle Bowden, who was part of the Bisbee Poetry Festival in the '80s, come. So we're going to have poetry all month, and we're super excited. And then I just want to thank everybody for all of your heartfelt responses towards our winning of this national award. We've had 300, 400 people come and just give us their words of thanks and appreciation. So just again, thank you all from us at the library.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Monica Patience. Welcome, Ms. Patience.
Evening, mayor and council members. My name is Monica Patience, and I live on 206 OK Street in Bisbee. That's almost on top of OK Street. And my talk today is going to be "Rails Red, Me Not." This is a short phrase, but it's a longer story. I have lived on OK Street for over 15 years, and I parked on side of my house every year since then. Back in early fall of 2018, when neighbors started putting rocks out on the street, I went to various boards here in the city, but realized any action wouldn't be taken before I had a survey taken, and I did. So I had two surveys made of my property and the neighbors' property. And then, so last, the last Thursday of February, I went to the Street and Infrastructure Board here and showed them the surveys and picture of the rocks. And I have also contacted my ward council members. Darryl Wilson was at the board there, and he said, "Oh, we can certainly remove the rocks." Then, on March 11, that was a Monday, I found the city crew was up at my house and painted this rail thread. So then I went and measured the OK Street down by the Elrado House to see how wide it was, and it's 17 feet wide. And up at where I am, it's 18 feet wide. And I also measured the street where the Catholic Church is on Carson Road, and it's 15 feet wide. And there is parked cars parked on the side of the roads, and there are no red. They are not red. So, and I spoke to the garbage truck driver, Donald Moody. He says he goes up OK Street and he comes down Youngblood Hill. So he has to pass that narrow road there outside Elrado. So I measured those streets. And then, my question is, what criteria is used to paint the rails red? Please, people, out here or somebody else, let's hold a meeting. You can call me up. You can find me in the phone book. You can find me on the internet under MG Patience CPA. I'm available. I have an office, and I have room in my office. We can have a meeting. I feel that I'm not treated... I don't think our citizens here in Bisbee are treated equally. I don't know. I've lived on that street, lived there, and parked there for 15 years. And the woman up above, she calls me a greedy whore and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Turner, you're down for sewer. Did you want to wait until the sewer rates are brought up, or is this something you want to speak to now?
Well, it's very short.
All right, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, you all know me. I all know you. I sent you all an email last night, and it was kind of short notice. I didn't realize the subject was going to come up today. My biggest thing is sewer. We have to have a work session for comprehensive sewer discussion, even as far as size of house, you know, how many sewer bismos are there. But this cannot be decided in one session. So can we please have a work session strictly for sewer? Thanks.
Joan Scotty. Welcome, Mr. Scotty.
Evening, mayor and council. So I basically just came here tonight to address the design review board situation. I do believe Frank Davis is a good match for the design review board as far as Ben Lepley. I know him. He's a friend of mine. I know he's an architect and stuff like that, but he doesn't live in town. So we'd be outsourcing, you know, our member again, and then that makes it hard for people to make it to the meetings, and then we end up in the same situation. And I don't recall ever hearing a discussion about what was going on with Tim Budge. He was just recently appointed chairman of the board. He's really good for the board. He's been on there a long time. So I would ask that maybe we put Frank Davis and Ken Budge on at the same time because it makes sense, and I'm more than willing to talk to anyone about why that is. I think I've already brought it up. And the other issue that we've been having since now the city manager is gone and he was trying to outsource Joe Ward and all our building permits and stuff like that, while Joe Ward stayed with the city, and now we would like to try to take our building permits back because at this point, we are giving building permits after the jobs are already done. So it's not working. The system's not working. We really need to look into this, please, and I'm more than willing to talk to anybody about that, too. I think I've talked about it before, and I've meant to get ahold of you guys, but I've been so busy, it's like hard to do. And that's basically it. Just, you know, if we could get Ken Budge and reappointed because he is the chairman, he's good for the board, he lives in Bisbee, and Frank Davis, that would be what I'd like to see happen. And definitely no more people from out of town on the boards because we've already got issues with the out-of-town people that aren't showing up to the meetings as it is. And the quicker we get this done, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scotty. Time for Brad Hurd.
Good evening, mayor and council. I want to talk about the same thing. It's the thing with the permitting go with you, the county for all of this. I have, when it first started, I was kind of okay with it, but now as the process has been going on, it's been getting more and more difficult to get the permits. It also seems to be overloading the staff with the county, which again, makes it a difficult thing to do. You know, it's, I go in for permits, we put in applications. Three weeks later, now we're going to get our permits, the jobs, you know, it's putting a halt to our work, and it's, you know, our work, that's our money, which is, we pay taxes on that. The city needs to take that over again. And quite frankly, I kind of feel like doing these intergovernment agreements kind of makes the city look weak, is in a position where they can't handle what's being put on them, and that's their job as a city. I'd much rather see the money that's going to the county go to somebody that's part-time for the city doing this work. It'd make just a lot more sense. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Richard Rosales.
Welcome, Mr. Rosales.
Thank you, mayor and council. My name is Richard Rosales. I'm community affairs for APS, doing some public service. And I just wanted to thank you for giving me a few minutes just to share some important good news and information about our programs. And as we come onto the summer months, we know that it's tough on electric bills, the summers in Arizona. And so we created a campaign called 100 Days of Helping campaign that we launched, and it's to bring awareness to the programs that we have at APS so that you can save money on your electric bill. So we have the Energy Support Program where it's a 25% flat discount on your electric bill for those who qualify. Prices bill assistance, so if you have trouble paying your bill, you can work with one of the nonprofits in town who does that, and they can help offset that. But then we have also budget billing, which is where you pay a flat amount throughout the year. And right now would be a really good time to do that because, as you know, we're going into the summer months when they start to escalate. So with that history, we can take a year of your summer, of your electric bill and just budget it out so that you're paying the same amount. Right now would be a good time to do that. And then always just make sure that you're on the right rate plan, the correct rate plan. And you can go on APS.com, or you can call our customer service, and they'll compare your usage and your history and give you some good options on what you can do to save energy and save on your electric bill. And then finally, we did announce, we've just announced our third rate decrease, and we don't get a lot of press when that happens, but it is a tax reform, the tax reform savings that we're passing along to our customers. So the bills have gone down another $3 on average for a residential customer. That, along with our fuel savings costs that we passed along, that was announced probably beginning of February, and then the tax reform from the end of last year. So if you're comparing your bills from March of 2018 to March of 2019, you should see an increase of $12 on average residential bill. And that would show up in the power supply adjuster, and that should have gone down. And then you'll see a little line item that says tax reform savings, and you'll see that go down as well. So please, you can find all this information that I mentioned at APS.com/pelopin. And it's just, again, we want to bring awareness, and we want our customers to know about these programs. We actually funded these energy support programs more this year. We just haven't seen as many people sign up for it. So if you would please help us get the word out, and I'm happy to help in doing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's always nice to hear about bills going down. Moving on to accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $353,451.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? Ms. Mayor.
On page one, I know in our last accounts payable, we had reimbursement mileage for Mr. Smith, and we have it again. This account's payable. When are we?
Ms. Bagley.
That was mileage to the ICA May Conference and Flag Staff. I think he went there three months ago, and he was just out of his place. So we're hanging right now.
Okay, because we had another account payable last.
Yeah, I think that one was a smaller amount, $68. It was for somewhere, I'm not sure. That was a CDO conference, maybe that was closer.
And then on page six, we have food pickup for Public Works. What is that, operational expenses?
I'll go to the bank and I'll go down and see where that was spent. I'm not sure if that was for.
Okay, because it says food/pickup and then office supplies, which doesn't make sense to me.
I think I'll need to back up one out and see what.
And then on page nine, I don't know if we even have a minute to answer this. We have a lot of expenses for asphalt. Right now is really not the time of the year to be using asphalt. So I was just kind of wondering where those was.
I think, actually, Yvonne told me that this was to repair the dip in the road over behind what?
Coach's Road.
Yeah, over near County. It goes back to County.
Hurford Road.
Okay.
That was taped last week. Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor of paying the accounts payable, say the five. State the five. Aye. Approve the same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Consent agenda. Items A through F. Item A, approval of the appointment of Juanita Hill to the Bisbee Health Commission. B, approval of the appointment of Frank Davis to the Design Review Board. C, approval of the appointment of Benjamin Lepley to the Design Review Board. D, approval of the park facility and right-of-way use permit for the use of City Park Bandstand for Shakespeare in the Park to be held on Saturday, April 13, 2019, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. This includes setup and breakdown. E, approval of the park's facility and right-of-way use permit for use of Grassley Park for the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter Animal Resource Fair to be held on Saturday, April 27, 2019, from 9:30 AM to 6:30 PM. This includes setup and breakdown. F, approval of the park facility and right-of-way use permit for use of City Park, Gore Park, and Brewery Gulch, the blues, and Bisbee Music Festival to be held on Friday, September 6, 2019, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and Saturday, September 7, 2019, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 Does the council wish to note item full for further discussion?
Yeah, like item C, full.
Item number C is full.
And I'd like item D, please.
D?
D.
D.
And I'd like item, yeah, full. I just have a question.
It does? So item C, D, and F are full. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, and E. I second.
Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item C, approval of the appointment of Benjamin Lepley to the Design Review Board. Ms. Giacaminho.
Again, he doesn't reside in Bisbee, causes undue problems, meaning we need to have a person who was on the board, who was the chairman of the board, who lives in Bisbee, who is available to be assigned, yet for some reason, he chooses not to. I'm just curious, why are we choosing people from out of town and giving them non-resident writers? Same.
The reason I chose Benjamin Lepley is because he's an architect. He lives in town half-time. He teaches at the University of Arizona, and he's active in the community. And I felt that his job skills as an architect could be something that would be of benefit to the DOP. That was the reason.
And yet, Ken Budge, who has infinite knowledge and experience and was voted as the chairman of the...
Well, this wasn't an either, or Mr. Budge's service to the committee is much appreciated.
My feeling is, you never really have a reason why. People have asked the public why he's not put on, and in the image of transparency, you don't know why, rather than I don't like him.
I'm sorry, but I'm going to direct you back to what the agenda item is. The agenda item is whether or not you're going to approve Mr. Lepley to the Design Review Board. Mr. Budge is off-topic. If you want to bring that back at a later time, you may, but at this point, it's off-topic.
I move that we approve the appointment of Benjamin Lepley to the Design Review Board. I'll second that. Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Lindstrom.
May.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
May.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
May.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
May.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion fails. Order three. Item number D, approval of park facility right-of-way use permit for the use of City Park Bandstand for Shakespeare in the Park to be held on Saturday, April 13, 2019, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. This includes setup and breakdown. Ms. Johns.
They just don't have insurance for this event, and they need to, and there's time for them to get it. Right now, then, that's what I'm told. Everybody else has copies of their insurance.
May we consider a motion to cable that until next meeting?
Yeah, because they had it marked. That was what was really weird. Maybe they just forgot it.
Exactly.
So I move to table this until next meeting.
I second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. This will be tabled. Item number F.
Yes, I just...
Approval of the park facility right-of-way use permit for use of City Park, Gore Park, and Brewery Gulch, the blues and Bisbee Music Festival to be held on Friday, September 6, 2019, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and Saturday, September 7, 2019, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Listen.
I noticed on the map that there's going to be barriers from about St., just past St. Holmes, all the way down to the end of Brewery Gulch, which means that people that are going up on the upper gulch cannot get down that way. And is there any, has there been any problems? Have you heard anything that is going to be a concern about having that blocked off or two days?
It's not totally blocked off. We had a... Chupi Chavak? There you are. We had a discussion in the meeting about this. Sir?
Mayor, council, staff, and members of the public. So the format that they're using for this is the same format that we use for the Fourth of July events. Traffic is allowed up. It's not allowed to come down. We have traffic around City Park, and it'll be directed back down to Main Street behind the Western Bank. So traffic will still be allowed to come down. OK Street will still be open for traffic to go up, technically back down, although we prefer to go up. But that traffic will be blocked off, and it's actually safer to have it that way than to have people crossing back and forth with traffic coming down. So we all met, myself, the fire chief, and the promoters of this, and this is what they proposed, and this is what we agreed to, or the condition that we agreed to.
Thank you.
That the map might not be...
Yeah, well, it was confusing because they pictured a blocking it off, and yeah.
Any other questions, Chief? Thank you. Any other questions on this particular item? No, actually, it says until 11:00 PM. Usually, they cut it off earlier than that. I don't remember going till 11:00 PM in the past. I think this was clear. Now, this is also included.
It's including breakdown, yes.
Yes, they are aware of that. Okay. Yes, sir. Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the park facility and right-of-way use permit for the use of Gore Park, City Park, Gore Park, and Brewery Gulch, the blues, and Bisbee Music Festival to be held on Friday, September 6, 2019, from 4:00 until 11:00, and Saturday, September 7, from 12:00 until 10:00.
I'll second. Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Klein? Or, I'm sorry, this is an old form. Excuse me. Councilmember Lindstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Council... Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to low business. Discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-1902, amending the appendix of the zoning regulations to bring the zoning use matrix into compliance with the text of the zoning regulations. This is the second reading. Mr. Gardner is not here, but this is the second reading. Does Council have any, it was provided to us, and it's in the packet. Does Council have any questions? Hearing none, could I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance O-19-02, amending the appendix of the zoning regulations to bring the zoning use matrix into compliance with the text of the zoning regulations.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. And Ms. Cornado, it's an ordinance.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is being pulled. Item number five, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-19-03, an ordinance of the mayor and city council, city of Bisbee, county of Cortez, state of Arizona, increasing the wastewater rates. This is, this is pursuant to a rate study that we had conducted at the city, and as a result of that rate study, basically, two options came out of that rate study for the council to consider. Option number one was that rates would not increase for a period of three years at the point of that study, which would mean that on July 1st of 2021, the rates would increase 3% for a total of $1.33 per month. They would continue to increase 3% for a total of three years, and then 2% for a total of four more years, with a final figure of $20.27 of $56.30, which is about $8.70 more if I might ask right than what we're paying right now. The second increase was some members of the council indicated that perhaps it would be better to have a moderate increase to begin with and stretch it out. So with that, the second option was in July 1st of 2019, for it to increase 1%, which is $0.48. And then it would increase 2% per year thereafter, for a total of, in July of 2027, a $1.10 increase, which is the same either way, and is the same amount of $56.30, $0.33, whatever. So those were the two options. With that, Ms. Bulley has signed up to speak, so, Ms. Bulley, would you please do so?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to ask you to delay the vote on the soar rate increase until the matter of a 1% sales tax approved in 1972 to pay for store services, and then later, in addition, a monthly store charge voted on in 1994 is resolved. I presented the documentation of the history behind this double charging to you all by email, so I won't go into detail now. Suffice it to say that as a result of a court case involving the city and a Bisbee resident, a special election was held in 1994, ordered by the Superior Court of Cochise County to resolve the issue of double charging the people for store services. In that election, the people voted to institute a soar fee instead of the 1% sales tax. However, that tax has never been eliminated. It is being collected as part of our sales tax and goes into the general fund. I have the results of that election here. The wastewater budget shows sales tax revenues from the half-cent sales tax passed in 2000 to fund the new store system, but the 1% sales tax goes directly into the general fund, not the soar fund. Most recently, during the refinancing of the store loan, the city manager, Smith, spoke publicly about the possibility of decreasing the soar rates as a result of the refinancing. What you have before you tonight is the result of a rate study increasing, not decreasing the soar rates. This increase imposes a financial hardship on any of us on fixed and low incomes. Mr. Parkin, the new city manager, hopefully, will be taking charge soon, and with his expertise, this matter can be resolved. And a proposal brought to council that will remedy this double charging problem for store services. If the 1% sales tax continues and is allocated directly to the soar fund where it was originally intended, there may be no need for a 2% rate increase for the entire eight-year period. Please consider tabling this matter for a few weeks to have Mr. Parkin study the entire city's sales taxes, so we all have a clear understanding of when each percentage of sales tax was instituted, and the double charging for the soar services can finally be resolved.
Thank you.
If there's any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. The sewer rate has been discussed in a work session earlier, and it's before us now. I can say that I had discussed this with, and received this information from Ms. Bulley some time ago, and referred it to Legal, who indicated that there wasn't, and I don't want to, my understanding was that there wasn't paperwork available to substantiate that information. However, that's all I know about that. So, discussion, council?
So maybe we should table it for further investigation to see if that paperwork is available. It shouldn't be that hard to find if it went to court. And with the potential of an interim city manager coming in, he would have the opportunity to thoroughly look through it and make a decision on it, and then get back to us and advise us.
Are we making a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Then please do.
I make a motion to table it.
I second that.
Okay, this will be tabled until next, until the next meeting.
Well, we can do it...
Yeah, do so.
Okay. Our second meeting next month, I'm the first to table it.
It'll be the 16th, I believe.
Okay, then I'd like to table this to April 16th. Give us a little bit of time. I second, say, to April 16th. Is that going to be enough time? Will that be enough time to...
If it isn't, we'll be bringing it back up, we'll be tabling it.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion of possible approval to enter into the professional services agreement to retain Stephen J. Parkin as interim city manager.
Ma'am, if I may, I put an option for executive session in case any of you had questions. It's completely up to you.
Yeah, I saw that, and unless I'm missing something, I see no reason, unless the council wants an executive session, I see no reason to go into executive session.
I do have one question, because it seems like there's a conflict or a discrepancy as far as the early termination by the city. The city manager shall be paid for services rendered prior to the date of termination. However, it says in the compensation that the city agrees to pay a flat fee of $17,600 and will pay for seven business days from the date the professional begins to work. So if, for some reason, it's terminated early, and it's for the 19 weeks, correct? So if, for some reason, we don't need the services for the full 19 weeks, which I don't see happening, but for some reason, if there is an early termination, then does that mean that amount of the, some amount would have to be repaid?
No. The agreement is for a flat fee, $17,600, I believe. So if Mr. Parkin works for one week or 19 weeks, he's getting that flat fee based on this agreement. If you terminate early, per the agreement, he gets the $17,600 within however many days. If you terminate early, then you would just owe him whatever additional expenses that he may have up until that time, aside from the flat fee. But the flat fee is the flat fee for his services.
But this would be, if I could, I believe this would be, he will be providing this periodic invoices for housing and mileage. And I believe that if probably is talking about early termination, it is that up to that point.
So, so you're correct, as far as the flat fee, he gets that according to this contract no matter what. I did talk to Mr. Parkin about changing that, if we could do, you know, pay him on a monthly basis, break it out. He was open to that. But this is the document we came up with. So if you, if you have reservations, if you want to change that, we can certainly consider that. He's sitting here, we can ask him now. If you want to make amendments, we can certainly work with Mr. Parkin. But, but when he presented the agreement, that's, that was the deal.
I personally would like to see it done on a monthly basis. That just makes it, I think, much easier.
You guys can discuss it, somebody can make a motion, however you want to proceed.
Ms. Hanson, the proper way to do that is if you're going to make a motion to pay monthly, that's what, that's what you want.
And, and if that's the route you want to go, I, because Mr. Parkin is sitting here, I would want to get his agreement here, just because, otherwise, him and I are going to be going back and forth again.
Okay, so you don't have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
No.
So I would, I would like to make a motion to amend the agreement to pay Mr. Parkin monthly as opposed to the entire amount within seven days.
And so just to be clear, your, your motion is, say he doesn't complete the 19 weeks, say he only completes 12 weeks, then we're going to prorate the $17,600, I think is the amount, we're going to prorate that, and we will just, the city will only pay him for those 12 weeks?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're clear.
We have a thumbs up from the subject. Thank you, Mr. Parkin. Another heart is out. Appreciate that. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Joining you. Lesson. All right, any, any other...
I just don't think it's necessary. I think we're already getting at a bargain, and he's incooperative with us. I just don't think it's necessary. I think we should just prove that was written. That's my feelings.
I agree with Councilmember Lindstrom. Either, you know, we're getting a heck of a bargain here, and I like the contract as is.
Ms.?
So just to be clear, there's already a motion on the table, you need a vote on that, and if it fails, then somebody else can make another motion.
Correct. Ms. Cornado.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Nay.
Councilmember Giacaminho?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes four to three.
But he still has a contract, is that right?
Yeah.
And, although I haven't interviewed the signature yet, city manager is required, so...
Well, I don't exactly feel like I'm a man in a strange land. But I do want to first of all say thank you. Thank you for asking me to do this. I have planned a long, relaxing retirement, and making sure that I got to one today. But, you know, this is home. And it was, you know, for those who may not know, I worked here for eight years before I moved on to the city of Winslow, and had five great years there, and decided to hang up my spikes. And then I started getting phone calls. So I'm just delighted to be able to help you for the next 19 weeks. Just a couple of things, because 19 weeks is going to go by in twenty minutes. First of all, I want you to know that those 19 weeks will be consecutive, except late in May, when our grandson graduates. We will be going back to our other Ohio, to not only attend his graduation, but he's promised me some time out on Lake Erie with Fish and Fish. So you got to do that, so, before he moves on to bigger and better things. I've had a conversation with the mayor this afternoon, we talked about priorities. Might be, my firm belief is that your number-one priority and our number-one task for the next 19 weeks is finding you a new good city manager. We just went through that process in Winslow, because I did give my employer a full year's notice. We had the luxury of being able to plan, and the luxury of being able to execute that plan, to do something that I was never able to do in my career, and that's take over the job before the old city manager was gone. So we had a wonderful overlap, and we probably won't do that in 19 weeks, but what I have done since we just finished going through that process in my former community, I have all those files. I intend to have those shared with you, so that we can come up with some suggestions for a plan. I'm hoping everybody's available next Tuesday, because I think it's time is of the essence to get started on this, and so that, you know, that 19 weeks doesn't pass before the task is done. Obviously, there's other things, and, you know, a lot of stuff, not least of which is your annual budget, that has to be done at that period of time. And so it's going to be like a whole week. So, but my pledge to you is this, Bisbee's council manager town, I work for the mayor and council for the next 19 weeks. I work for all of you equally as a body. Your recommendations, your policy decisions are what we implement. That's the way it's been my entire career, and I think those of you who were here when I was here, before, remember, that's how we did things. And so that's my pledge to you, and so it's going to take all of us to make this happen. It's going, it's going to go a lot rapidly, so we need to, we need to hold our good straps to get it done, and for that, thank you. I was here all day today, I'll be back tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you. So the record is clear, Mr. Parkin's 19 weeks started this morning. And with that, I move to the chair. Thank you. We have a second. Although some favor, Jermaine, I...
Aye.